Put that in tile.
Shall we get them going here?
I'm ready when you are. Bang that gavel.
All right. All right, everyone. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners' work session. It's February 27, 2023. On my left is Commissioner Kevin Cook, who represents District Two, and my right is Commissioner Kevin Cook, and on my left is Commissioner Aaron Mays, who represents District Three. I'm Bill Rippon. I represent District One, and Betty, you're on.
All right. Betty Greiner, Director of Administrative Services. This morning, we just want to give you a presentation on captive insurance programs. I'm going to start out by telling you a little bit, well, as you all know, we had a huge insurance increase in our premiums this year on our property insurance, property insurance as a whole. And so we're looking at some different options that we think may be some cost savings for the future. One of the options we're looking at is this captive insurance program. We currently do something very similar for our health insurance and our workers' comp. For the health insurance, although it is administered by Blue Cross Blue Shield, so the employees just see Blue Cross Blue Shield on their card, we are actually self-insured. Blue Cross Blue Shield administers our program. And then we have a stop-loss insurance that any one that hits $200,000 in one year, then that reinsurance company pays for that. On the workers' comp side, we are also self-insured, but we have a stop-loss or a reinsurance-type situation that is $750,000, but that's not per year. That is per occurrence. So if an employee gets hurt, that employs occurrence. If the costs of that go over $750,000, then it kicks over into that reinsurance company. So this is something we are already doing in those types of insurance. So it's something we think is worth looking at, and, you know, we're in the initial stages of this. This is just informational meeting for the three of you to kind of help you know what this even is and how it operates. We have two people here from Willis Towers Watson to walk through this with us. Kent Miller is our vice president. That's kind of our rep with them. And then we have Bruce Whitmore, who is kind of their guru, I guess you would say. He is their senior captive consultant, so I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, gentlemen. Sorry. Without further ado, I'll bring Bruce up here. Bruce does a lot of this kind of work. I merely want to let you guys know that there does not appear to be shortages of rate increases going in the near future for insurance. So we wanted to make sure we talked about having additional options. So we think this option is viable or may be viable, depending on how the results come out. But it is something that a lot of peers that you guys have are currently doing. So without further ado, I want to introduce Bruce.
Thank you very much. My name is Bruce Whitmore. I serve, basically what I do is I help organizations kind of look at potentially taking the next step in the manner in which they finance risk. I kiddingly tell people I create small insurance companies for a living. So, and I not only do that for this organization, but I actually teach courses at the International Center for Insurance Education, or captive insurance education, which is affiliated with the University of Vermont. So the whole reason for getting through this is I want to start off by saying I don't want to sell you on a captive. I simply want to inform you as to what these things can do, and then we can figure out, excuse me, if you want to take the next step, what would be involved. So first of all, just a very quick thing about Willis Towers Watson Capt. We manage over 440 of these facilities in 35 domiciles with $33 billion in assets. It's just very simply, we do a lot of this kind of work. In our part of the business, there is the captive consulting piece, which is what I'm doing, helping people understand the use of these facilities. There is the captive management, which is effectively an accounting and a regulatory compliance role. And then finally, there's the insurance program administration for, you know, types of facilities that are really, really transactional in nature. You would not end up utilizing that particular part of our business. So let's talk about what really is a captive, you know, what role does it fill? If you look at this risk financing continuum, what you'll see, excuse me, is you as commercial, or I mean, as personal buyers of insurance, you buy guaranteed cost policies for your homeowners and your auto liability. So that is at the lowest end of financial and program control. As you move up, you'll move up into utilizing large deductibles, self-insured retentions. You're already being a qualified self-insured up here. And kind of the next step beyond that is the single parent approach. Finally, you've got organizations that just truly go bare. And we'll get into a little bit of the definitions and distinctions between these as we go along. So first of all, what is a captive insurance company? It really is a licensed insurance company. It really is that simple. At the same time, it does not have the level of regulatory control and constraints that a personal lines carrier in the state, for example, undergoes. Because ultimately, the key job of the parent is, or I mean of the captive, is to protect the parental organization. This is not a case where the captive needs to be regulated because, oh, they might charge 50 more dollars for, you know, the personal lines policy. So it is a much lighter regulatory touch, if you will. But there are still some regulatory constraints, and that can actually help give you some peace of mind because then when people say, well, what is this that you're doing? Why are you doing it? Then, hey, this is a insurance company subject to the constraints and the rules of Kansas. Therefore, it is in compliance, and it allows a level of governance. We'll talk quite a bit about governance in a little bit. The other role of the captive is it can sit behind a commercial insurer. So in this gray box up here, we're showing a traditional insurance company with the captive behind it. It's an industry term, and I hate it. It's called fronting. It just sounds so devious. Ooh, they're fronting for us. No, what it means is a CNA, an AIG, one of those folks, would issue policies, and the captive is behind it so that if you need it for regulatory purposes to evidence cover, you can get that A-rated paper and yet still retain the risk and keep the underwriting profits behind the scenes. Or if you will, behind, you know, and the other part of utilizing that true front is that, and it's one of the reasons why people do this. If, in the highly unusual event that something were to happen to the captive, it were to become insolvent, CNA, AIG, whoever issued those policies are statutorily required to still pay the claims. So it gives people, oh, you really do have the financial strength of one of these major companies. There is a cost to that approach, so I wouldn't go down that road quickly. But at the same time, it's one of those key uses you can do. The other piece of a captive, think of it this way. You buy insurance. Insurance companies buy reinsurance. It's one of those things, I've heard people equate it to buying wholesale. It's not quite that simple. Re insurers are not necessarily, if you will, they're not stupid capital. They don't come running in where angels fear to tread. But at the same time, there are times when access to the reinsurance markets, and we'll talk about things like police professional, right, where the insurance markets are very, very concerned, or some of the others, where it may be that accessing the reinsurance markets can actually be a game changer. Now, let's talk about, again, a little bit of the basics of financing risk. You've got commercial insurance. You've got retentions and deductibles. You have this thing called the captive. But obviously, you could, you know, in a case of a significant scenario, issue municipal bonds, tap on credit lines, you know, rely on tax increases. You know, there's any ways of actually post-loss financing. At the same time, how disruptive is that, you know, to the county? And that's kind of where that game gets played, if you will, a little bit. Commercial insurance, there's some significant pros to it. You know, if you have a, you know, if you have a tornado loss, the carriers aren't going to come in tomorrow and ask for a 200% rate increase. They're going to ask for an increase. Sure, they will, because they do smooth losses. You know, and you also get underwriting expertise. So think about something like cyber liability. These are people who understand the numbers. They understand the policy language. They have the services lined up to take care of what to do and the cyber response after the fact. So there is some value there. At the same time, what else do you give up? You still have to pay for the fancy buildings, you know, the overhead. You have to pay for the profit margin. You have to pay for the risk margin, i.e., they are legalized betting. Okay? So there's a risk margin that you're paying for. And then inevitably, too, you tend to lose some control over claims because once you give the money to the insurance company, they're like, no, it's our risk now. So we get to manage it, which, if you really want to settle out a claim, I've had some folks who said they wanted to settle a claim, call it $4 million. Now, it doesn't apply to you because of your governmental immunity, but where they really wanted to settle the claim for $4 million, the insurance company said, no, 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 we can defend this. We're going to fight this to the death. Jury came back with a $16 million verdict. So sometimes, control over claims can be a critical part of it. Now, you then get into the unfunded deductibles and retentions. Hey, they're a great thing. They cut your insurance costs, no doubt about it. They cut your insurance costs until such time as the claims need to be paid. So then, and I've seen this multiple times, where a retention may increase from, call it $500,000 to $750,000 or to $1 million, and people say, yeah, not buying as much insurance makes sense. But then I say, okay, now, but by so doing, you took on more risk. Did you budget for it? Did you set aside funds for it? You know, did you figure out also the increased defense costs that are going to come into play? So that's where you start to look at certain circumstances where there can be disadvantages. Or, let's say for a moment, again, you have a large uninsured loss. I don't know. Let's pick on something. I don't know. Let's pick on police professional. Okay? Comes in and suddenly, something really significant happens. And, okay, so maybe the tort limitations may apply, may not. I'm not going to get into that. But let's say it's a significant number. Now you're in a position of having to then defend, well, we don't buy the cover. Why didn't you buy the cover? Well, it's too expensive. It's this. It's that. It puts you into the defensive position just from a PR situation. So where the idea of formally funding for it to say, no, we thought about it. We actuarially projected the losses. We gave this sufficient thought where this was an informed decision, and then we actually funded dollars for it. Now that decision is much more rational. So, kind of touched on the idea of the captive. While it is a true insurance company, it doesn't mean that you're going bare. It means that you're picking layers of risk to, kind of more formalized, if you will, do a lot of what you're doing on the self-insuring currently. You may still say, we want to buy reinsurance or excess cover at certain attachment points, and you should. But it does amount to, when I talk about accountability, think of it this way. The captive now has its own income statements, balance sheets, cash flows, actuarial studies, board meetings. So now the people who are attending the board meeting and are making decisions are doing so on a very informed basis. We have had clients who have, for example, started off with, oh, their workers' compensation, their medical professional liability, and their auto liability, and they're captive. Only to then, three, four years from now, say, well, hold it a minute. We've got this significant property exposure. We've got these other lines of coverage. Let's put lots of lines of cover into the captive. We'll talk about the benefits of that. But again, it's that issue of accountability that comes into play. So, by the way, and I want to pause for a moment. If you want to stop me and ask a question, please do. Because, first of all, if you throw me off, I'm probably not as good as you think I am. And second of all, if I can't answer a tough question, you shouldn't do it. So, but besides that, it makes it more interesting. So, again, it comes down to issues of program control, program design, access to reinsurance. Let's talk about capacity, because there's this interesting, you know, the federal terrorism backstop, right? Insurance companies can access the federal backstop for a certified terrorism event. Your captive can do the same thing. So it allows you to access the true federal backstop at a lower cost. So if that's an issue of concern, that's just one utilization.
I'll stop you.
Sure.
Since you told us we can. When you say terrorism, does that include like cyber attacks?
There is not currently cyber, I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong. There's not cyber currently under the federal terrorism backstop. I don't think there is. But it does cover, for example, the backstop does cover nuclear, biological, radiological, and chemical attacks, which the commercial markets generally do not.
Okay. Question for you. I'm sorry, Jim, did you?
I was just going to ask a question. Is this similar to the National Flood Insurance Program? Does it operate sort of similar like that, where the feds say, if you want this, you have to follow certain rules in your local community, and then you have access, if you want access to this?
Right. It's a little bit different in that if you are a U.S. domiciled insurance company and you write terrorism, first of all, there is not a fee to the federal government. And then if there is a certified terrorism event that exceeds X dollars that they say is a terrorism event, and then there's a co-insurance provision, which is basically, it's percentage of the captive's overall dollars. So it's a little bit of a deeper dive, but it's really a federal backstop that was created so that the insurers would not become insolvent in the event of a terrorism loss.
This is a reoccurring question. It may be premature. But during our briefing before the acceptance of the new policy, during the hearing on the new policy, and now today, I've asked the reoccurring question of, what are the other counties in Kansas doing? Specifically, Johnson, Wyandotte, Sedgwick, Douglas, Riley, comparable counties in Kansas. And I have yet to hear from Willis Towers Watson or Ms. Beck. I know she's made recalls to the clerks. But no one has come back to say, this is what the other counties are doing. And while captive insurance may be something that we would want to look at, I have yet to have anybody say, this is what other counties are doing. Are you asking us to do something that no other county in Kansas is doing?
Well, so first of all, let's talk about governmental entities in general, and then let's then come back to Kansas. So, you know, you've got most of the major, most of the major city hubs. And, for example, the Chicago Transit Authority, Boston, those folks. A lot of those larger cities with their busing and transportation are utilizing captives. So it's not as though it is not done within the governmental space. Now, let's talk about Kansas specifically. There are two captive insurance companies established in the state of Kansas. We just got done forming one for another Kansas entity. So the short answer is, have other counties done this specifically in Kansas? Not to the best of my knowledge, because if they did, I would think that they would have domiciled them in Kansas. Now, let me also tell you why I may not know, is if an organization goes and forms a captive, virtually across the board, the states have said, those are subject to privacy rules. And so, for example, if Conoco went out and formed a captive, entirely possible I wouldn't know about it, unless we actually manage it.
That is a concern. There was a bargaining unit that had an option for retirement accounts, and they had sat down with the HR department, with audit finance, with the county commissioners to look at this retirement program, but no other county in Kansas was doing it. And there were concerns with other counties and other states and how it was implemented. And it causes, sometimes it can cause governmental entities to be concerned when you're asking them to be the test guinea pig.
Understood.
And so...
And there may be some ways that we can do things similar to this without the actual true utilization of a captive.
And so I'm going to re-ask the question, though. Has Willis Towers Watson been able to find out what Johnson, Sedgwick, Wyandotte, Douglas, Riley, even Reno County are doing?
We have not, as of this point.
All right. Ms. Greiner, can you please issue a open records request for those counties? Thank you.
So it will not surprise me if what I see, what you see them doing is a mixture of larger deductibles and retentions and potentially qualified self-insured. So, with this being said, the captive can also formally fulfill coverage gaps. So, for example, if ransomware was excluded on the current cyber policy, that is something that the captive then can underwrite in the captive. Again, potentially, not, may not be any cheaper, but potentially reinsure. From a legal and tax compliance position, that can be an area where very, what would apply to the county was, usually captive insurance companies are subject to U.S. income tax. But in the case for a governmental entity, it would not be, and it's just a case of making it abundantly clear, no, this is not subject to tax. And then finally, there's commercial, but that's, I'm not going to waste any time other than to say, guess what, Best Buy makes more money selling you the extended warranty than they do selling you the TV to begin with. So, captives from municipalities, specifically. What we tend to see, the common lines of coverage begin with workers' comp, auto liability, general liability. At the same time, think about, you know, what we call convective storm in our industry, tornado risk. Employee medical stop-loss is very commonly put into the captive, and I'll explain why in a minute. But you've also got issues that are becoming increasingly concerning to the commercial carriers. So again, you start to think about police professional or correctional liability, sexual abuse and molestation, and to some extent, employment practices liability. These are areas where the commercial markets are raising rates, and they're raising them significantly. And yet, if you can look at your particular exposures, your particular numbers, and say, hey, we think that we are better than the commercial market is willing to price it, you have two options: not buy cover at all, right? You could take a higher and higher retention, but then again, you can finance it into the captive. And I'll tell you why that makes sense in a moment, but I want to touch on the medical stop-loss first. So you're already retaining layers of risk for your employee medical stop-loss. The issue is a particularly bad, you know, let's talk about a, an organ transplant situation, hemophilia, or some of the new gene therapy drugs are really, really expensive. So yet, you may look at this in-between layer, this, look at the commercial stop-loss now and say, we haven't tapped that in three, four, or five years. We're paying a lot of premium. So commonly, what will be done is, we'll look at, also in addition to everything else, taking an intermediate layer into the captive. So sure, everybody's day-to-day stuff of going to the doctor, don't put that into the captive. That's just exchanging money for no real benefit. But if you start to talk about larger losses, where it would be nice to smooth that, set aside dollars, and we'll talk about the portfolio effect in a minute, that might be an intermediate layer that we would like to take, not have the volatility on the county's year-over-year financials, and by so doing, purchase, again, less commercial insurance.
So can you walk me through if we had an employee that was working for the solid waste department?
Yep.
And there's an accident in which the employee falls off the back of the truck while it's going down the roadway?
Yep.
And they're severely injured, requiring a lot of medical attention, a lot of medical costs, and they become permanently...
Disabled.
Disabled.
Yep.
Is this where that would apply?
No, because that part of it would be the workers' compensation. Where we're talking about medical stop-loss is the true health care, where, no, that particular individual comes down with cancer.
This is Jim Crow, but you could, through worker, you could set this up?
Oh, this can very easily apply to workers' comp, and as a matter of fact, it's most, very commonly used for workers' comp. So let's talk about the portfolio effect, because I think this may be where you start to go, this starts to make some sense, is we talk about things like workers' comp, general liability, and some of these other lines of coverage as being non-correlated risk. In other words, the workers' comp claim might have something to do with an auto liability case, maybe. It can be, but at the same time, if you're talking about, if you're talking about police professional won't, would not therefore affect the medical stop-loss. And so because it is uncorrelated, just as you would invest your own funds and not put it all with one investment, you diversify it. And the same thing applies, you know, you think about investment risk, well, this is insurance risk. Risk is risk. So by diversifying and putting in funding into the captive, a good year in one line will offset a bad line in the other. And then if you actually get into the math and the quantification of it, the actuaries like to price to what we call a 75% confidence level for self-funding, meaning, three years out of four, we're going to be, we're going to have a little more money than we actually need. Because one year out of four, something's going to happen. Now, the idea here is, if I price it out line by line by line, and I end up in this mythical situation on $16 million, the actuary says I need $3.6 million additional, if I model it on a standalone basis, oh, it's $3.6 million. But if I model it together as a portfolio, and I calculate out that smoothing, it's not $3.6 million, it's $1.6 million. So it's a way to actually mathematically take that smoothing effect into account. Now, I'll tell you this, without the captive, that portfolio effect still exists. It's just this helps quantify it. So again, this is where I start to think about governance, this, about accountability, about the folks on the captive board really understanding the numbers behind the numbers. So I want to touch briefly on captive taxation. And I'm going to talk about for-profit organizations just so that I contrast them with the tax-exempt ones. So in the for-profit world, okay, let's say I'm a physician practice. I want to, first of all, I can put into place large deductibles and retentions. Problem is, I can't tax deduct anything for those until the claims actually have to be paid. So what I'd rather do is I'd rather pay the dollars into my captive insurance company and have that captive be treated as an insurance company for federal tax purposes. I tax deduct it over here, and then guess what insurance companies do? They get to, they get, we as insurance companies get to deduct losses, in a for-profit world, before we ever pay them. How do we do that? Oh, well, we have claims that have been reported but haven't been paid. Yes, I can tax deduct those. I can deduct what is called IBNR, incurred but not reported claims. I can deduct the expected trending as long as it's supported by actuarial... I can, I can deduct the expected trending as long as it's supported by actuarial science. So, hey, you know, if I'm Warren Buffett, I can collect $100 million a premium and tax deduct all but the remaining 2 million and avoid tax for years as these claims take sometimes decades to close out. And in the meantime, I get investment income. So, that's how it works on the for-profit side. And then, the question is, okay, well, how does the captive gain a tax deductible status? First of all, you got to actually pay premium to it. Secondarily, it has to have risk sharing with lots of independent third parties. Now, as the county, you do not want federal income tax. You don't want this unrelated business taxable income. So, we simply talk, I talk out the other side of my mouth. This is where we then structure it to fail all of those usual and customary IRS tests. You're not sharing risk with somebody else, okay? You're not achieving that risk distribution. And, and even for that matter, most captives established in the US will actually get a formalized, you know, tax exempt status, which obviously for, for a county municipality is not going to be particularly difficult. So, it's kind of a long way of saying that there are a formalized way to ensure that no taxes would result from this. Now, the other part of it is, if you buy excess surplus line policies in the state, most of the time, those policies are still taxed, okay? So, there are ways to avoid excess surplus line taxes as well. In some states, there, those taxes may be waived, I don't know in particular for you. But again, it's a question of, you know, a tax reduction as well. Let's talk briefly about domiciles and then we'll open up the floor and talk about just general things. A lot of times when people think captive domiciles and they, they immediately think about Bermuda, oh, it's the oldest domicile, they think about the Cayman Islands, they think about the movie The Firm and moving money offshore, and obviously, you're not going to do that. Let's talk, I want, I do want to talk about Kansas as a domicile in a few minutes. But, we then look domestically, Vermont. And I tend to tell people, if you're going to go somewhere and form a captive, you want to do it in a state where it's something they do really well. Vermont is the oldest captive domicile out there. Think about the economic engine of Vermont, what is it? You know, Ben &amp; Jerry's ice cream, some skiing, some maple syrup, right? No, there's 600 captive insurance companies that employ an awful lot of people and generate some tax for the state as well. So, they're not going to screw it up. I mean, they are committed to the industry. But let's talk Kansas for a few minutes. So, we formed a captive for a Kansas domiciled organization and they just said, look, we have to do business, you know, in, in our own state. Said, absolutely. And thankfully, there is a captive law on the books, and so, we recently formed one in the state. Now, they'd had the law on the books for years. We went to the Department of Insurance and initially, they went, yeah, can you kind of teach us how to do this? Because it had been years since they had looked at it. So, but we've now gone through that process, there's a much better understanding at the state level now. And so, it is a way by which this formalized mechanism will still be subject, even now, to the state regulatory approval, not particularly onerous, but, again, if you want to do something where you can say, Commissioner Cook, for example, you were saying, hey, is this defensible? Yes, it is a licensed insurance company under the state of Kansas law and regulated by the Kansas Department of Insurance. So, it's not going out there and taking a flyer. Now, let's talk about captive costs, because this does come into play. And this may be the point where you say, no, we're not going to go down the captive road, or maybe we will. So, I don't want to waste a lot of time on this feasibility and implementation, but let's talk about ongoing operations. General rule of thumb, between captive management, ongoing actuarial work, you know, audits that would be part of your audit in existence, but probably at an increase in fee, some government fees, you're probably looking at somewhere around 100 to 120,000 dollars of additional cost to operate it. The question is, can, you know, is the value that the county gets out of it worth that additional cost? I would say this, when you start thinking about the numbers involved on the workers' compensation, the numbers involved on the employee medical stop loss, and so, and then not to count some of the currently uninsured lines, 50,000, I'm going to talk, some of these expenses exist anyway, and some you probably should be incurring, like actuarial, actuarial in some lines. Let's say the incremental cost is 50,000 dollars. If I can, if by so doing, you're a better buyer of insurance and reduce 50,000 dollars of insurance cost, you've just made up for it. Or, if we can actually bend cost curves, because this is one thing that captives sometimes do, is, we look at a particular loss cost, call it workers' comp, and say, oh, lifting injuries are the prime cause of. We've actually had captives say, I don't want to go to my budget for some loss prevention structure, even though it makes sense, it's harder to get those budget dollars. But if I can look at it actuarially and say, if we implement this, it will reduce losses by that, and create an ROI, if you will, then at that point, the captive sometimes will be used to pay for those risk mitigation efforts.
When we form a captive, you're forming a complete legal business entity in the state of Kansas?
Yes.
What would prevent multiple counties from forming a coalition for a captive, such as northeast Kansas?
Yep.
Jackson, Jefferson, Wabunsee, Potawatomi, Brown, they all form together in Shawnee County, one coalition for a captive?
So, in theory, nothing. Now, let's go beyond theory, though. Technically, according to the IRS, if you put multiple tax-exempt entities into a captive insurance company, there is risk shifting, there is risk distribution, and therefore, it is a taxable situation. And there have been some IRS rulings, for example, a number of, I think it was tax-exempt hospitals did this. And ultimately, the IRS said, yes, there's risk distribution, therefore, you owe us underwriting profits, you know, on the, you owe us tax on the underwriting profits. We may, very possibly, and if there's interest in doing it, I'd love to do it, is structure as what we call reciprocal, so that, in that way, the tax-exempt entities, you know, basically don't pay tax. Now, I want to go down one more rabbit hole, if you don't mind. The downside to it is, obviously, if Johnson County causes an underwriting loss, it affects what, what you funded into that captive. So, the question is, are you comfortable with that? And are you comfortable with answering those questions when they come?
Well, and I don't think that any of those other counties would join us, because Jackson, Jefferson, Wabunsee, Potawatomi, Brown, they all have a much lower risk exposure than Shawnee County does, given that we have a very large correctional facility.
Yep.
We have a very large workforce as compared to those other counties.
Welcome to the world of group captives. I will tell you, I deal with this on a regular basis where everybody says, oh, but I'm better than, and you know what? This is, this is kind of, I'm trying, Garrison Keillor who think, who says, you know, all the children are above average?
Right. Well, the reason I was, again, I was just asking is, if you have additional operational costs, if you're able to form a coalition, rather than each county?
Yep.
Trying to, and again, you're asking Shawnee County to be the, the guinea pig on this, the first one out the, out of the chute with a captive. If we have those operational costs that are already going to be there, you're not going to have, you can lower your operational cost, at least that component, by having a coalition.
Understood, that if we can share the burden across multiple insureds, it certainly does drive down expense. And there are some ways, which we have done, where lower-risk clients can retain X, larger-risk clients can retain Y, and you can do some of this same, if you will, smoothing, and maybe even, where I would see the real value would be buying reinsurance on a, if you will, bulk or discounted basis. Now, again, it is a harder lift to get a group captive going. You've got to get buy-in. I mean, I, I set one up for physicians, and I can remember, we were having an introductory discussion, one of these, and it wasn't until this one cardiologist stood up and said, so how much capital do we need? And I, and I said, normal for a group captive, it's 25,000 per participant, and he sat there and said, fine, here's my check. Because what he wanted to do was get those guys moving. And ultimately, we did form the captive. But yeah, it takes a few people to go, this is such a good idea, you know, somebody needs to lead.
So, I, I think what you're describing is more like K-Cam.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Which is like 70-some-odd counties.
It's exactly what I'm describing.
But, you know, we've been told time and again that we're too big for K-Cam, that we'd be the, the heavy hitter in their organization, it probably wouldn't make sense for us to join something.
And there is a downside to both the small folks, if there's an 800-pound gorilla, and sometimes even to the large, because, you know, you don't need to buy cover at the same attachment point. You know, you can, you can retain much more risk. So you may very well say, I don't want to be beholden and restricted to these other buyers of insurance that have 25,000 dollar deductibles.
So, I did a little bit of, like, Googling here, and it looks like there is only one captive in Kansas right now.
Two.
There's two now?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
We formed, we formed the other one and it was licensed in January.
But there, it looks like there was a law changed recently that does allow you to contract with unaffiliated businesses.
Yes.
So like, owner of a captive can have other companies, as long as their premiums don't meet a certain threshold or something like that?
Yes.
So, so theoretically, we probably could partner with another?
Yep.
Municipality or county at some point if it were?
So, what you're, what you're talking about is generally referred in our business to, as what are called cell captives, where we take a parent company and attach a little subsidiary that might be there, for example, for the smaller counties to bolt onto or participate together. And we can structure it so that even the parent captive is not affected by the gains and losses of the cell.
So, here's a hypothetical, so if, if, let's just say, we ended up going into this and could we like have townships join in, like our townships in Shawnee County, is that what you're saying, like?
Very potentially. Now, I will say that I think the Kansas law currently does not allow cells, but that doesn't mean that the, that the law could not be amended to, to, it's, it's a relatively easy change.
Amending laws is never.
I understand. At the same time, they amended the captive law recently to do it again, you know. It's, it's not exactly one of those, you know, highly contentious issues.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Management fees?
Yep.
That seems to be the big-ticket item here.
Yep.
What all does that?
Entail.
Yes.
Right, sure. First of all, it is insurance company accounting, so, which is different than your existing, because we, there's, for example, reserving and the discounting of reserves, there's a lot to go, that goes into that particular piece of it, and then there is the regulatory compliance with the domicile, in this case, the Kansas regulators. So in other words, board meetings, income statements, balance sheets, cash flows, actuarial studies, all have to be filed with the state accordingly and in compliance with insurance and all. So that is what that, and you're right, that is probably the biggest lift of them. The actuarial, the actuarial could be com, more complex and be a higher part of it. Depends on how many lines of coverage and how difficult that lift is.
Any other questions?
So, let's, now, so we've kind of gone through this, I think this is like the last, oh, let's talk about feasibility studies, because all captives, the beginning of a captive is a feasibility study. And for those people who have been around the industry, they think of it as, oh, the, it's the actuary giving you the numbers for how many dollars you need to set aside. And I say, that's only the beginning, because, first of all, we need to do a in-depth goals and objective setting. You know, which are the lines of coverage that make sense to put into the captive? Which are, you know, which are so small and the juice isn't worth the squeeze, right? So it's goals and objectives, which coverages are problematic? Where do you have lines of cover that are not currently insured? Do we need to go to the reinsurance markets for those? From there, then we do research, the, the actuarial analysis comes into play, and you start to say, okay, how many dollars for loss funding are we setting? And then, from there, what's a bad, worst-case scenario, you know, what's a average scenario, what's a favorable scenario? We then do, a lot of look into the ownership and structure. Obviously, municipality-owned, it's going to be relatively obvious. And domicile, you know, we're going to say, look, all things being equal, there is a Kansas, you know, domicile law, let's use it, we're now, we've worked with the regulators. So, you know, sure, think about Vermont, because they really know what they're doing, but ultimately, politically, you're probably going to say, no, let's stay in Kansas. And then, five-year pro formas, again, expected adverse, and then, the favorable loss scenarios. Here's one other thing that happens with captives, and I haven't really touched on this. As the captive builds surplus, you're setting aside dollars and you see the results, and let's say that you build up 3, 4, 5 million dollars of surplus. What's the next logical thing? Well, buy less commercial insurance. We have dollars there. It's more difficult to face a half a million dollar retention, jumping to a million, than it is to say, we're going to make an informed decision because we have a couple of million dollars of surplus. The price of the insurance, we know, is more than the long-term cost will be, so therefore, we can absorb it. So, the building of surplus makes informed decisions of buying less commercial insurance over time more, not only palatable, but then more educated. And then, of course, finally, we come in with the timeline. So, coming back to this, I really, I want to be careful and say, I don't want to be selling you on a captive. Do I have a passion for these things? Yes. Do I think these things work? Yes. Will the actuaries bear it out that over time they save costs? Yes. But, the last thing I want to do is to sell you on setting up a captive that three years from now you go, why did we do this? This doesn't make any sense. It's a really good way for me to screw up your relationship with Willis Towers Watson in, in general.
And that's a fair point, given that your county commissioners are elected and change office, your county clerk is elected and will change, audit finance directors will eventually leave us in a very, very, very long time, not anytime soon, right, Betty? And even county councilors, I mean, change. And so, in three years, you may have an entire different slate of individuals sitting here.
And one of the things with captives, and I, you know, one of the things, when I build them, okay, not I, we, but when we build them, one of the things that I want to do early on is to set up key, key performance indicators. Because one of the things you always have to be in a position to do is to show, why did we do this and is it paying off? Now, guess what? It's like risk management, though. Sometimes it's very, very hard to prove a negative. How do you prove that we didn't have these costs? Well, sometimes it's through the actuarial work, sometimes it's, look at the costs of the commercial insurance and the, the, the average loss cost or average capped claim severity. There are ways that we can measure. I will, I won't kid you, there are times where a CFO will come to me and go, yeah, Bruce, but we could have done that without a captive. And I say, absolutely, you could have. But again, this is like the divesting your investments. I can do it without a professional investment advisor. Question is, will I? Secondarily, am I as good at it as somebody that I? Secondarily, am I as good at it as somebody that I would hire and pay the cost for? And if the answer is, you don't need a captive, then you shouldn't do it. But the study has to be able to rationalize it with real numbers. And I will tell you this, when I start off on a study, okay, there's going to be an executive summary in there that, so somebody doesn't feel like they have to read the entire 187 pages. But, the idea being is that any conclusion that I am, and recommendation that I make needs to be backed up by further explanation, numbers, facts throughout the rest of the report.
All right, I've got several questions.
Please.
So, a lot of information here. I may have missed a couple of things as you're talking, but just a minute ago, you mentioned something, a favorable loss scenario. I don't remember hearing that, what exactly that is. Could you explain?
Sure.
One more time?
Basic is, hey, we didn't have a tornado this year. Hey, we didn't, you know, we, you know, we had good claim circumstances.
Okay, great. I'd never heard that before, and so, I'm glad you explained it. So, are we, so I guess what I'm trying to figure out here is, you know, what's the role of Willis Towers Watson in this? Are you simply acting as a broker? Are you the administrator of these accounts? Do you take care of all of our filings with the insurance department?
Yep.
If we decide a domicile here? Where do we, let's say, we all are, you know, gung-ho, and we decide, this is what we want to do. What is Willis Tower Watson for?
So let's differentiate and bifurcate the roles. You know, you've got Kent and their team who do the placement of the insurance, the brokerage, okay? There is the captive management role, which is a separate role. We certainly offer that, we provide that, all of that sort of work. But at the same time, you can have someone else as the captive manager, if you prefer, as opposed to us. So, the role of that captive manager, again, heavily on the accounting side, but then also, yes, the filings with the State Department of Insurance, and making sure that all of those regulatory requirements are met.
If we were to go this route, would we need to be hiring internal staff to help with the administration of any of this?
Short answer is no. Longer answer on that is that we do obviously help our clients with the preparation of the captive board meetings. It will involve a little more work, at the same time, it should be drawing from standardized reports that are generally needed anyway. So, we're talking about a, really a quite minor lift with, but you should have board meetings, call it every six months. And I tell people that, please, you know, do yourself a favor, make them beyond just, oh, we're checking the box that we approved the minutes and the financials. Take, you know, a good hour of that meeting, maybe more, each time to do strategic planning. We're building surplus, what's the next pain point? Is there a pain point? Should we, for example, we've had good loss experience. Should we pay less premium into our own captive next year? Because that's the most logical step, is not fund as much. So, I get it. Where I think the real value for you becomes this issue of, number one, formalized funding for losses that you're not funding for right now, so that there aren't surprises. And secondarily, governance and accountability. Now, take one more step and say, I can, we can probably even figure out a way, and I know we can, a way to do this without actually licensing the captive. You could do it as internal funding. And again, utilize a lot of those same services, but not use that last step. Now, downside to that? The funding mechanism can't access the reinsurance markets. May not be a game changer, okay? But the formalization of the actual licensed entity with these requirements tends to drive all of that governance accounting, because it's just too easy to go, yeah, I've got 42 emails, thanks, right? And we'll get around to it sometime, where the captive drives that attention to detail. But, could we structure it so that it's not a formalized captive? Yeah, we could do that. And my report should speak to both sides of that.
So what are our deductibles based on?
Well, as it stands right now, it's, it tends to be a comparison of expected losses versus the premium savings. And many insureds who are just out buying insurance in the marketplace go, yeah, that just looks expensive, so let's not do that. The extent to which you have actuarial studies, which as a qualified self-insured on the comp and the auto and the medical stop-loss, I'm presuming you're getting actuarial studies for, or at least in some areas. But, again, this, that's why the captive makes sense, because now you're getting the real, you know, the projections.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Last time we spoke, I had a question about the Kansas tort claims act and the effect on the cap in that act.
Yep.
On having a captive insurance, and will that be a problem or a potential problem that we would need to deal with?
Yep. And that's a fair question, and it's a question where I very quickly go, I say, I should not be playing an attorney on TV.
Okay.
So, but the general concept is, the existence of the captive should not, at least in theory, affect the caps. Now, I will say, at the same time, I had, this was a tax-exempt healthcare system in Oklahoma, and they were relying on a different type of immunity. This was charitable immunity. And in their particular case, there was case law that said, well, hold it a minute, if you have a pool of money, set aside, no, 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 that whole pool is exposed. And in their case, again, we structured it in such a way so that it did not negative, you know, so that it kept the charitable immunity in place. But that is something that, you're spot on, we need to think about and not expose the county to larger verdicts.
So, I understand, like, one of the downfalls of this, or one of the more difficult parts of this, is setting up the initial reserves, basically, the funding mechanism for our claims or whatever.
Yep.
So, county commissions, previous county commissions have spent probably the last 15 years building up a pretty substantial rainy day fund for us. I mean, are we going to be putting that in jeopardy? Or, I guess I need to figure out, like, the funding mechanism for this? Are we just, a certain amount needs to be set up front, or what?
Do you want to address that?
If, if
And I could do some theory, too.
Okay. Well, let me explain a little bit how we fund our health insurance and our workers' comp now, because I think that will help you understand this a little bit. What we do right now is, we have a separate fund for our health insurance, and we have a separate fund for our workers' comp. Those funds build up their own reserves. For the health insurance, each department pays into that fund based on the number of positions they have. Each position pays in so much for each position each month. Same with the employees' portion goes into that fund. Then, whatever we have to charge the departments for that fund is based on the claims that we have. We have had really good claims the last few years. As you know, we didn't have to increase our health insurance for our employees at all this year. That's because we have had good claims. And that's where he's talking about that reserve building up, if you have a favorable loss year, because we've had favorable claim years, so that those reserves build up. Those reserves stay in that fund and are used only for that purpose. Same thing with the workers' comp. Now, the workers' comp's a little different. We do that on a percentage of salary. And that is, I look at the last three years, the trends, what the claims have been, we sent, set a percentage of salaries for that. Those departments that are more risk adverse, I mean, that, you know, solid waste, public works, those types of departments that you know are just going to have more workers' comp claims, I do an analysis on that, and they are, they are charged an additional percentage that goes into that fund. Same thing. It builds up. If you have, some years you have big claims, other years you have a really good year, that they build up. So I see this as a similar thing. Right now, we are paying our premiums for health, for our insurance. What I see we would do, either, he talked about a different structure, too, either we set up a different fund that those premium, what we would have paid for premiums go into that fund, or what we would have paid for premiums go into this captive. You know, we still have to budget that out in the general fund. It would not change that. It would just go to the captive or to a property insurance fund.
Sure.
Another thing that could help with the reserves of this, one of the things we talked about was potentially moving the health insurance and the workers' comp into this captive, which would kind of get you, give you some seed money for those reserves, and then you would continue to build them up. You know, we also talked about phasing in certain things. So, there again, you're building up those reserves as you phase in, and you can phase in the reinsurance.
Okay, so
Does that help?
Yeah, in this, what you called seed money is probably what I was really getting at, is that, you know, I understand the premiums going, I think I've got a pretty good grasp on how it all works, like, sustaining itself, but starting it up is where I'm at right now. I mean, are we going to have to take five million dollars from reserves to plant into that fund? Or are we gonna?
Okay, but this is simplifying it, but right there, this year, we paid $2 million on insurance premiums.
Yeah.
If we put that $2 million into this captive, okay, I know we didn't have $2 million worth of claims this year. I don't know exactly how, what our claims were, but they certainly weren't, you know, or last year. So, there again, you have some good years and your bad years, so I'll let you go ahead.
Well, and I think that's the reason why we're talking about this today, is because in a year where we had very little claims, we had a huge increase in premiums and in deductibles. And so it appears that our insurance is getting more expensive for no reason. And so, that's why we're here, because if we had a captive last year, we wouldn't be in this situation that we're in right now.
So let's talk about, you know, this pool of money, because that's an important part, and thank you. So, you've got dollars set aside for claims already. Two ways that we can handle that. You could use the captive solely on a go-forward basis, and let all of those old liabilities in that fund run off. Or we can do, it's a fancy term called a loss portfolio transfer, or an LPT, transfer those funds into the captive, because the captive now is going to be responsible for paying all those historic losses. So effectively, a transfer of funds from this fund over into your wholly-owned captive insurance company and take on all those past liabilities. We do both. It doesn't mean that there's necessarily a good way or a bad way necessarily. It might be cleaner to rip the Band-Aid off, and that'll actually give you the funding for startup. Probably more efficient, but I'm not going to say, ooh, it really needs to be done that way. You touched on how much money are we talking about. So, in Kansas, minimum capital for a captive, and it's just dollars you've got to have, is $250,000. Beyond that, it's, you need to be funding sufficiently to, you know, absorb the expected losses. And again, this comes down to, what happens if the captive fails? Who gets hurt? Only the county, because it's the county's captive. And therefore, you know, considering with all the right controls and constraints and everything else, first of all, the chance of the captive actually becoming insolvent is very, very low, because you're funding it appropriately. And it's all the county's risk anyway. So the idea being that, if you wanted to do an LPT to move it over, and that gives, you know, the muscle to be able to, for example, finance police professional, sexual abuse, correctional, whatever, you know, or risk that's not insured, great. If you say, that's too big of a political lift, then we figure out a more transitioned plan to get there.
So, what would be a maximum? Also, I mean, let's just say we're paying in $2 million a year in premiums. Do we just fund up to the reinsurance threshold then, moving forward after that, and then adjust the premiums according to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so again, just because you finance risk in the captive doesn't mean that you stop buying commercial insurance. It's a thoughtful, more thoughtful decision that you make over time. There are a lot of captives, majority of them, that will start off financing kind of the known lines, and then they will expand over time. To say, oh, yeah, okay, now that the board is comfortable with, now that we fully understand this, now that we've had a year or two on the board, yeah, let's take the next step.
Okay, so, another question you mentioned, and Betty mentioned this, maybe kind of transitioning into it one line at a time. Well, if we were to do that, where do we start? With what line? I mean, I know that, he had given us a list of all of the company's responses when he was shopping our insurance.
Yep.
And it appeared that nobody wants to insure a jail. Is that the place to start?
It may well be, okay? But again, that is really a driving part of the goals and objectives, okay? We peel back the layers and say, where is the pain point? You know, what is the low-hanging fruit? Or do you want us to really analyze 12 lines at once? So
So, I think what would happen there is, all this would come out in the study that he's trying to do. That's where, in that study, we're talking with tax people, we're talking to accountants, we're talking with lawyers, and that's why there's money invested, as well as actuaries. So all that would be filtered through the study, the fine-tuning. But we don't ever, you know, come out and do these unless we're pretty darn sure it makes financial sense. But all that would be fine-tuned out of the study.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the other thing, is I don't want to sell you on a study and then have you be frustrated and angry, and it's not good for a relationship.
Right.
But I did want to address what Commissioner Cook was asking. So, we do insure, and have knowledge of a few cities and counties, I think I shared this last time, in Kansas, that everybody's experiencing the bump, and then more closely related to you guys, we insure a bunch of stuff. We have a whole division in our company that just does misbalances, right? And that group is growing and growing and growing, because everybody had this major shift over the last three years, at least once. So I do anticipate rates continue to go up over the next few years, just being candid with you. Probably not, not probably, hopefully, and can't say assuredly, but probably not to the degree what you expected or what you experienced this past year. But rates are not going down right now, property losses are not deteriorating, and we also have a lot of social inflation going on right now on jury trials, it's causing liability and auto rates to continue to fly up. So, and to the Matt, to talk to that point more so, there's very, very few carriers that would insure, that insure groups in the municipality world, especially when you start getting them this size or not. That's why the captive part is starting to pick up. Never introduced you to them, because we hadn't really needed the captive teams before now, but now I think you're at that level. You're not the guinea pig. Somebody said you're the guinea pig in that area. Not the guinea pig at all. We actually do this quite a bit. We know this route, we know how this works. So I don't know if you have any more questions on those areas?
Well, except that you indicated that Shawnee County, if we went to captive, would be the first county in Kansas.
In Kansas.
In Kansas. And, I mean, so, that begs the question. Shawnee County is not the largest county. We are a large county, but we are not the largest county. And in fact, we have a correctional facility, but we don't have the largest correctional facility in Kansas.
Right.
And correctional facilities are generally your largest liability category of possibilities.
Yep.
And so, why, is it just that the captive idea in Kansas is so new that no one else has jumped to it? Or is there, are there reasons why the other counties have said, maybe not yet? It's too politically hot, it's too risky, we're not familiar with it, our clerks said they won't administer it, they've Our clerks said they, they won't administer it. They've already got too many regulations on them from the state.
Right.
I would, this is my actual, this would be my actual.
So, I mean, I just. Why, why now? Why us? And, and is this a conversation that you're making a presentation to Johnson, Wine Dot, Douglas, Sedgwick, Riley? Are you making this, this same presentation to those other counties?
Ken, do you wanna handle that?
Yes, we have another one today. So this is not, I, I, so, but we would love to have more. And, and I, my guess is that we'll, we'll be having more discussions with many more in Kansas.
So key takeaway is captives tend to start from the coast and work their way into the heartland, right?
Like everything else.
Like everything else. So, you know, the larger the population center, the more severe the venue from a litigation standpoint, those inevitably drive the captive formations much earlier, and then it works its way in. I think the other part of it is that, you know, Kansas is literally such a, an unknown domicile. I mean, up until there was one, right? So now there's two. So again, it's one of those, yeah, is there some discomfort of doing something different? Sure there is, absolutely. Keep in mind though, you're talking about, this is an organization, this is formally, formally funding and moving it from a fund by fund by fund, workers' comp is separate from the, from the autos, separate from the, from the employee stop loss, to a consolidated fund that's still 100% controlled by the county. So I certainly understand the concern and what are the political ramifications, right? So I think for us to be able to connect you with other municipalities and other organizations that have done this would be, you know, let me give you a really prime example. Go down a little rabbit hole here. University of California, they had a workers, and so, and they're quasi-governmental, okay? Had a workers' comp and a medical professional liability trust. Combined, it was $65 million at the time. This was back in about 2014. They formed their captive. Ultimately, they did, because they kept, they were third-largest employer in the state of California, said, we want to expand the utilization of that captive. They now have over $650 million across, I think, 37 lines of cover in their captive insurance company, and they've pegged and they've been able to show they've been saving the university system over $10 million a year. So it's, it's not an untrodden path, but I also understand the concern. What about, it's also an issue of just plain size. So let's assume for a moment that you are only incurring $500,000 a year in claim costs. I would look at you and tell, tell you, don't do a captive, because the frictional expense is sufficiently high that the, the gain, the juice, isn't worth the squeeze.
I think all that stuff is, is a little bit different too, when, when you're figuring out what you can get, what you think you're worth, what you think that your claims will be. So all that stuff, you know, of course, takes careful consideration. All we're doing is presenting another option for you to consider. Certainly do not need to do this. It's just another option to help control expenses is all we're, we're trying to throw out here. Insurance is just a financing mechanism, and this is another lever that we can pull, that you guys are at the size and now your premiums are at the level where it makes sense to start exploring. And, and that's what we're here to, to, as another option for you.
Okay, so let's talk timeline. So let's say we all walk out of here, Betty calls us on the phone later today and says, what do you wanna do? And we all say, let's do it. Let's, let's dive in headfirst. You know, what, what's the timeline like? I mean, we, we start our budget process probably in July, June-ish. I mean, is, is that enough time to get something like this up and running? Are we looking at 2025 or, or beyond even?
Yeah, so the first thing is, what I'd wanna do is to put out a proposal for the actual feasibility study work. So, and, and I think the key point there is go through and, and let's do the first step of the goals and objectives. Select the key coverages that need to be part of the actuarial analysis. Once we do that, we can tell you what the pricing for the project will be. From there, it then becomes a question of data availability and going through the process. That data availability and going through the process will realistically take 60 to 90 days. By that time, we would deliver the formal feasibility study. And then aggressive implementation with, with the state of Kansas is probably two months. I mean, it'll take them 60 days from the time we get done and you say, yes, we wanna form. So realistically, we're talking about, the captive could be operational on a, moving forward at a reasonable clip by July 1 or August 1, if you really want it, need it. Now, the other thing with captives is we can backdate coverage into it. Remember I was talking about that loss portfolio transfer? You're setting aside dollars anyway? So unless there's something magi, not magical, but particularly, we need to leverage a market by using the captive. Oh, there's a impending, you know, October 1 cyber renewal that we really need this for, then we're on a tight, you know, we're on a deadline. Other than that, it's very common for people to, they may kick it off and say, January 1 of '24 is, you know, because of the fiscal year end, that's a date that we need, because that's when the dollars and the budgets and the taxes and all that are gonna flow in. Let's focus on that date. Can we get it done by then? Absolutely.
So to follow up, we, I think we did all of our insurance in January this year. So we've got those policies in place, I believe, until January, when they renew, right? So is this a situation where, let's just say we get this up and running in four or five months? Can we terminate all those policies and just flip a switch, or are we locked in for?
So, so I, I, I think what, what Bruce is recommending here is that we, we walk before we, we start running. So maybe we increase deductibles up, sorry. We increase deductibles up, still keep those things in place until you decide to, to, to push those out. Let's just use a 1-1. I think a 1-1 is, is a feasible date, but you can, you can cancel those should you want. But I think a 1-1 is a pretty, is a pretty good date, because there's, there's lots of decisions that need to be made. You guys have to go back and think about things. By the time we have these board meetings, stuff like that, I would say 1-1 if we, but something needs to be done right now to start thinking about. At that point in time, we need to figure out, you know, what is it? Can we, can we remove the auto altogether? Can we remove the liability altogether? What's that ramifications on, on the legal part? Those are all questions that have to be hammered out from this deal. But I can't imagine you guys would want to take out the property. So that, that's a pretty, that's a, you, you wanna build your captive up before you start taking on those types of risks. But there would be some things on the liability side that we could, we could build up. And that, that all, I'd have to ask you to, to comment on that. But we wouldn't be removing all the commercial insurance, right?
No, again, and I wanna keep coming back to this. Just because you have a captive does not mean that you stop buying insurance and you only buy it through the captive. It is financing of specific layers of risk. There are lots of large healthcare systems, for example, that they will retain the first $5 million of each and every medical professional liability, med mal case. And yet, they will buy $80 million tower above that 5 million.
Right.
So it could, it could be, it could be that you, you decide to buy, you know, I think, what is the deductible amount? $250,000?
Hundred.
Or 100,000 on the casualty?
I think it's 100,000.
100,000? So then you, you could, you could say that we're, we're only gonna buy insurance over 500,000. And then your, your insurance premium goes down, but you put more in the captive. And then we keep adjusting that until you don't need it. So as you build the funds up. Does that make sense?
Yeah, like a ratchet.
Yeah, because what we wouldn't want, this goes back to what Bruce says. We would never want a captive to go insolvent. We wanna make sure it's got all that. We wanna make sure it's ready to run and, and running smoothly. But there would be additional costs, I, I wanna be clear on that. There would be additional costs in the first few years to build up some of that funding, so you can start doing that. So that, and some of that funding is, is already being paid in claims. So in, in the way I could kinda see, I don't know how this proposal's gonna come out or the study would come out. Perhaps instead of taking a $100,000 deductible, you, you keep paying 50,000 as you normally would pay today, but then the captive may take 50,000 to 250 in that first year, something like that. Take that tran, take the commercial insurance down, whatever it would be for 100,000, increase that to 250. Put that $50,000 deductible essentially that you, you put in the captive, 50 to 250. Put that little layer in the captive at first. And then if things go well, we get enough money built up, maybe we bump that to 500 or a million or 5 million, whatever it goes into. Does that sound right?
Yeah. Again, all subject to the, to the tort caps that are in place, because that's where a lot of this, if you've got tort caps in place, why buy insurance? Unless there's things related to the tort caps that are not covered.
But we don't now, right? Didn't they remove all that with the Supreme Court ruling?
I'm not sure which ruling you're talking about.
I was thinking, never mind.
We'll talk about it. It's a complicated issue, because there's a provision in the Kansas Tort Claims Act that indicates that if you purchase commercial insurance above the cap, which is currently 500,000, that's your new cap. So if you carry insurance that covers you up to 1 million, your cap is no longer 500,000, it's 1 million. So that's what you wanna be careful looking out for. Now, that only covers certain specific types of claims. When he references police liability or something out of the jail, a lot of times you're talking about civil rights claims that are federal claims through U.S. 421983. Those are not subject to the same cap. So you're gonna want to research to make sure that how you structure it preserves our state law caps that we have, if possible, but covers us for those other liabilities that are not subject to the cap.
And again, so yeah, so your captive might issue policies only to the $500,000 mark and therefore not expose. And yet, at the same time, take advantage of that portfolio effect that comes into play across the multiple lines, because, you know, the money needs to come from somewhere. And it's nice to have a pool of money for all insured losses. But you're spot on that, yeah, we have to be careful not to invalidate caps, which is, it's one of those things I can certainly talk around and talk to, but I'm not qualified to say, how do you do this from a legal perspective? That's where the attorneys come in.
Does the captive, how, how do they, what's the process for getting the, the, the third party? Do they just shop around and look for the lowest price that they can get, or?
You mean, as far as, like for reinsurance and some of those things? It's very similar to the same brokerage role that Kent and their team do right now. It's just very simply, so, for example, I think of Hanover in Germany. They are a reinsurer. They do not issue traditional commercial insurance policies here in the States. They're a very good reinsurer. So the ability to access that, or maybe a Lloyds of London. There, there are certain carriers out there that are reinsurers only. And again, sometimes that purchase of reinsurance is a game changer. Other times, you may say, hey, we've got Chubb. We like Chubb. We're gonna stay with Chubb. Just because you have the captive doesn't require that, no, 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 I wanna continue buying this as excess. Now, let's go down one other little rabbit hole. Let's talk about the syndicated programs. These are the, you know, you've heard of Lloyds of London and Marilyn Monroe having her legs insured. The way this works is the brokerage, the brokers approach lead syndicates over at Lloyds. And you get one syndicate who says, okay, here's my terms. For that risk, it'll be $142,000 and we'll take 12.5% of the risk. That is then, because you now have a lead syndicate, it's then shopped out to the other syndicates. And others throw in and they go, well, if he, if he's doing it, we know he knows this business, and they pile in. Now, good and bad. So good thing about that is if one syndicate pulls out, because they've had a bad experience in this line of cover, generally, you can fill that in with other syndicates. Now, let's talk about something like, let's say, police professional. Let's assume for a moment that some of the syndicates go, we really don't like that business. And they pull out, and you've got a, a missing 15%. Your captive can now step in and go, fine, we'll take that 15%. So it's, it's a, it's a really flexible, neat tool. But that doesn't mean that you have to go way, you know, into the deep, into the weeds day one.
It spreads the risk.
Yeah, exactly.
Simply, but it would be the same process as what we go through on our side. They just, their market option is way bigger on the reinsurance side. And then you can compete against that as your own insurance captive to keep, drive those prices down.
And Kent has access to all of our reinsurance placement folks. So effectively, you're not gonna see a major change other than it'll be a restructuring, a reshuffling, and, and more strategic.
Any other questions?
There's a lot to comprehend here. We have to follow up. I, I've tried to keep this pretty high level, because we know you guys don't deal with this every day, so like we do, so we're trying to.
Well, I think that if you look at where we're at, we are not even on the first phase of the feasibility study. Today was just the initial presentation. And then what we would do is we would have internal conversations about progressing to the first step of goals and objectives.
Yep.
And making that determination, is this something that we want to partner with or look at? And maybe even starting the goals and objectives.
Yep, agreed. There's a reason why I call this a 101 to 301 in an hour, because we go from the basics and now, you can tell, we're now talking about syndicated London programs, that you're, you're deep into the insurance nerd world.
Well, we blew your timeline on that.
That's okay.
Sorry about that.
No, but we're here to answer questions first and foremost. And I think the key thing, I'll speak for Kent for a moment, is the key thing we want you to understand is our role is not just to shop the insurance, it's to bring creative ideas to save money to the table for you to think about.
Any other questions? Bruce, Kent, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So would you like to discuss among yourselves, since you normally can't talk to each other, would you like to discuss among yourselves next steps? Or what you would like, anything you would like me to do? I, I will do the open records request, but, you know.
I think maybe we just probably need to sit down individually with you, Betty, and let this digest. That would be my position. And then also letting you take some moment and letting this digest and see what benefits there may be in proceeding.
Well, and, yeah, I think that's accurate. Although I, I would probably say maybe a phone call before the open records request might be, so they don't think we're after them.
Well, we've already started the phone call, and they didn't respond.
Yeah, I tried last month.
So I had to ask Ms. Beck earlier, and Ms. Beck had made phone calls to those counties, and none of them responded.
They just, yeah, they don't. And why is the only people who can stay there?
That's right. A lot of the counties, well, especially when you're talking the larger ones, the clerks don't, don't handle the insurance. It just happens that in Shawnee County, I happen to be the one that handles the property insurance. So they put, you know, say, well, I'll get ahold of such and such, and they'll get ahold of you. I did, the only one I heard back from was Riley County, and I think they had a 15 to 18% increase last year. But Riley County is, you know, is considerably smaller than we are, and I don't know. I, he did not give me, I asked him specifically, would you give me a breakdown of all your, your, you know, your different coverages were? Nope, I just got a flat, I got a, we had about a 15% increase. So I, I don't, I don't know. If insurance, if insurance coverage is a real secret, I don't, I don't have any idea.
Well, I think it's all a matter of public record.
Well, it is, but, but they're, like I said, they're just
Where all of it was kind of laid out.
Getting the information. But I did want to say one thing, we, we started our self-insurance for our health insurance in 1998, and we have been doing that since then, and we've been able to control costs and control the, you know, Betty explained how, how the process is, and it's really been a very good, very, very good option for our employees, because they have wonderful coverage and, you know, it's seamless, because they don't know how the financing part of it comes. Just, we're hoping that we can, at least some of the coverages that we have now with our, on the property side, hopefully this is what we could do, if not all of it, but in, you know, maybe 10 years from now, that's what we're, we're putting the seed down for this to possibly happen through this, through one of the, one of the plans that Bruce and Kent are, are proposing, okay?
Okay.
So anything else you would like to direct me to do? I'll talk to you individually, I'll.
Let's do that. Kent?
Good, thank you. All right.
I don't think we had anything else on our agenda today, so.
Public comment?
Oh, public comment.
Announcements?
Administrative communications.
Administrative communications, announcements, nothing? We're done.